Good evening, this is the Housing Committee. Today is Monday, it's Monday, August 21st, 2007. Uh, council, council, councilors present today. Estela Councilor District B, Estela Reyes, and Councilor District A, Mira Ortiz. Councilor, my biyard, Councilor Mark LaPlante, he couldn't be here today for personal reasons. We have one item on the agenda, item 294-17. This is the temporary construction easement for Marston Street corridor improvement on signal light intersection at Ferry Street and Commonwealth Ave. Today we have the land use planner, Daniel McCarthy, present here. Councilors, do you have any questions about this item?
I would like Mr. McCarthy to just explain a little bit more about what's happening in that area, because that is my district.
Absolutely.
And I know that I've attended several meetings about the planning and the stages that were going to happen to make the improvements in that corridor. So I think it would, it would benefit everybody if you could just share a little bit.
Absolutely. Glad to. Diane McCarthy, the city ladies planner, 225 Esq. Street. The document you have before you is a project we've been working on for quite a bit of time. This intersection has been identified as one of the most dangerous intersections in the city. For a number of years, we've been sending letters from the Plane Department requesting the Department of Transportation to upgrade this to a full signal light. Right now, it's flashing red one way and flashing yellow the other way. A large number of accidents, a lot of high-speed traffic on that. And we were able to secure through the Transportation Improvement Program, the state's tip program, over a million dollars to make these improvements. So we're going to be putting all new lights in, all new handicapped ramps, crosswalks. There's going to be the handicap accessible colors, the sounds and everything. That's an important crosswalk because it's also, a lot of the kids from this, from that neighborhood play Little League over at the Little League, and that's an important way of crossing.
That's correct.
Also, as part of the funding, we were able to secure some money to do the sidewalks for about a quarter of a mile on the north side of Marston Street. This was supposed to be done years ago as part of a project. If you ever walked down there, you noticed that the sidewalks were actually, the granite was put in, but the concrete was never put in, it was just dirt. So we're going to improve all that. I've gone out to secure the easements from every citizen that's affected by this, and uniformly, they are all thrilled with this project. As I said, this neighborhood's been waiting for this for a long time, and it's finally coming forward. The, if you were at the, I know you were all there Tuesday night at the council meeting, I requested that this be put on a, for a vote on September 5th, I believe, for a public meeting and a full vote on that night. Because this project was a, was funds coming over from unspent money by the state, and by doing this, we're going to be able to get higher onto the construction schedule, and hopefully, this work will begin next spring. That's our goal right now, to have this work begun and completed next spring. So if there's any questions, be glad to...
Through you.
Sure.
So I know that, thank you so much for just giving a little bit of history to the people that are at home watching. You may not know that I've been working part and parcel with the city and even the state to get this to happen in our district at Marston and Ferry Street. How have you logistically, or has that been addressed yet as far as the time of day when this work is going to be happening? I know that because it's a very busy intersection, there was some concern about the backup on both sides happening. So has that been worked out yet as far as this, this portion of the job?
That hasn't. Right now, the plans we're working on are what we call 75% plans.
Okay.
We're going to be going out to the, well, the state is going to be handling the bidding process, and part of the reason we want to get it voted on next week is so that they can get it into the central register and to get it advertised by September 9th.
Okay.
And then it'll be going out to bid in the winter. And that, all those details will be incorporated into it. I know speaking with some of the citizens in your neighborhood, we did talk to some of them about what they needed. I, in my past dealing with the contractors, they've been very accommodating to time. No early morning work, and I think especially with that intersection, avoiding rush hour is crucial.
Right.
You can see, because of the flash and light, right now, the traffic backs up coming into Commonwealth Avenue, all the way out to the Rotary, and it's dangerous.
That is correct.
So yeah, so we will, that will be one of the things that the City Department of Public Works and working with them will make sure that it's done.
Thank you. That, I think that that satisfies my question on that, because I know that that was an outstanding question. I think I'm also glad to hear that there's been constant communication with the citizens, like you say, my constituents, that are directly impacted because this is right on their doorstep.
Yes.
And so with communication and making those reasonable accommodations, I think that this project is going to not only be positive in the long run, but be a positive throughout the process. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you.
Through you.
Sure.
Yeah, it's not a question, but I think this is a great opportunity to recognize Councilor Mira, who has been working, because it has been reported to me as, you know, I don't even know how many time, and by the time I contact her, she was already working on that. And I think that is a very positive message for the people who is being looking to see that something was going to happen, actually. And, I mean, the answer that we got was that the state has to get involved, which I'm sure that she was aware of that. But I think the most important thing is when we know that something is doable, that we consistent and we keep on working, and I just need to express that and thank you, Councilor Ortiz.
Thank you.
McCarthy, so assuming that everything is going well, is the, is the traffic light warrants, meet the warrants that is required? Is the traffic light meet the current warrant that is required for traffic lighting on that location? Assuming that based on the accident and amount of...
The existing light?
Yes.
No, I don't know that answer. It's, it's, but...
So the plans are at 75% right now?
The plans are at 75%.
Okay.
Yeah.
So when we expecting to have the 100% done?
The, 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 the light's going to be brought up to the, the intersection light brought up to the Department of Transportation guidelines and requirements for the...
When is, when is the plan to do, to have the 100% done?
Probably within a week or two, I'd say.
Do you think that we can have...
E C engineering's working on those. So the ones I have, that I've given to you are 75% plans.
75%? Okay.
They're at, that's 75.
Can we get the, a copy of the 100% when it's done?
I can find out when they're going to be available.
We have it for the record as well.
As ready as, yes, absolutely.
All right. So councilors, we have a specific situation that we need to approve today, and it's that this is the easement for those people that are going to be affected by the project, and it's going to provide some type of land, a little bit of land probably, to the city to continue with the project. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yep. And if you look at the, if you look at the packages, they're provided, each, each easement comes with a page showing a map and a plan for that specific property's easement. So those are already completed. I think the details on the, more the streetscaping stuff of that nature, that's, that's not done with 100%. But the easements have all been calculated and have all been determined, and each one will be an individual package and an exhibit as part of the easement. So typically, like, when we did the Butler Street project, which had 70 easements, we just submitted one set of plans rather than do 70 of these. But in this case, instead of recording 100% plans, we're going to record the individual easements with the meets and bounds dimensions. It's more accurate and it's, and it's satisfactory to DOT guidelines.
For the city to be, to have those easements satisfied, do we have to pay any money?
What's that?
For the city to have those easements satisfied with the owner, do we have to pay, as a city, do we have to pay any money to this owner?
These are, these are temporary construction easements. When we talk to the...
Oh, temporary construction easement.
Right. When we meet with the people, we discuss them and tell them that under federal law, you're entitled to it. We're not offering any money because this is a temporary easement. The calc, the estimate is usually two or three days that they'll be working on the person's property.
Okay, I got you.
The easements do last for three years, but that's for purposes, the purpose for that is if the sidewalks crack or there's some problems, we have a three-year warranty to have the contractor come back and repair those. That's why it's a three-year easement.
All right. Do, and this is, we have three years warranty, what's the reason that we have three years warranty on this project?
Well, it's, it's, I'm not sure about the warranty. I'm saying the warranty's probably longer than that, but the easement's for a period of three years so that we can go back on the land. So if we put down sidewalks in front of somebody's house and those sidewalks crack, we're going to be calling that contractor back to come back and fix that sidewalk.
That is for every project or that is for money that have to deal with tip money? That is only for that project specifically or that for every DOT project, the three years warranty?
Every easement I've done has always been three years.
Okay. So everybody's on board, everybody's fine with this? Councilor, do you have...
Yep, and then I said, Attorney Boati did review these and, and okayed them.
So we already ordered the public hearing for this, right?
Yes.
All right. So, Councilor, there is any other questions? Can I get a motion to, send it to the full council with a, with a full recommendation?
Motion to send up...
Second.
With a full recommendation. Favorable.
Favorable.
With a favorable recommendation.
There is a motion on the table, probably second, all of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Mr. McCarthy, do we have anything else on the agenda they would like to speak to?
I do not, just wanted to say that. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Can I get a motion, Councilor, there is any other item on the agenda they would like to speak about?
I would like to take item number 337-16 at a table.
Sure. There's a motion?
Second.
All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
337-16, right?
Yeah, 337-16. So 65 Ferry Street, I had wanted an update from Attorney Corrigan. In addition, I wanted to speak with Liza. I know that they're not here today, but the former homeowner is here with us today, and I wanted to give him an opportunity to speak on 65 Ferry Street. Did you have anything to, to address with us today?
All right, so hold on a second. Hold on, let me, let me open the floor for... All right, Councilors, we have a situation here, 337-16. This item is 65 Ferry Street, and I believe that this property's been declared as a surplus, meaning that, that foreclosure went through, and we have, the next step will be the disposition of the property, haven't, that haven't been done yet.
No.
Because I'm assuming that it's have, to have one year, one year period before we declare, so, no, before we actually do the disposition. We have the old owner here?
Yeah, I would say previous owner.
Previous owner, currently is the City of Lambs.
The current owner is the City of Lambs.
The City of Lambs, yes. How you doing, sir? Name, I'll just for the record, please.
General Charlie Chan, 65 Ferry Street.
Okay. So, sir, do you have anything to add to this item to be on the records?
I've been trying to work with the, my city council district, I'm in a counselor. I don't feel good because I just got into a car accident last week, and I tried to work with the assistant city attorney, but I don't know.
So the situation with this property is that it went to, it went to foreclosure, the city get possession of the, of the, of the property. So right now, the city owns 65 Ferry Street, and you live in the property, right?
Yeah, I live in the property and I want to redeem it, but I did not understand much about a lot of one year. I just found out like two months ago, so...
Have you, did you pay your taxes on the property before?
No, sir. I owe some, but I come up with a plan, I have a certain money put away that I...
Do you really, guys, Councilor, do you remember how much was the tax property?
I was going to talk to Mr. Corrigan today, but he, I don't think he's in office.
That's what I was hoping to see here from you.
And I was asking if anyways, now I finally meet the housing committee, I've been asking...
This is the Housing Committee here.
Yeah. Now I'm meeting you all, so I've been asking Mr. Corrigan, you know, if he could take like all the interest and the penalty out, and, and I never have a chance to get to know and meet you, so now, is there any way you can help me out? Because I've been helping the city all my life.
So, this situation, right now, obviously, it went to court. The city took possession of the property through a court process. It was a court resolution, a court order that allowed the city to take over. I'm just talking about, you know, from my point of view, not necessarily from my legal opinion in front of me. So have you talked to the city in terms of paying the money back that you own in taxes?
Yes.
Do you have an agreement with the city?
Many years ago, I come in, tried to make a pay plan, payment plan, they did not accept that, somehow miscommunication or, and then I've been, Mrs. Councilor Ortiz been trying to help me as much as she could, pinpointing the rule and the law, and I'm, I'm working with her, and I think she's still trying to help me, and I've been working, so...
This item, to declare this property as a surplus, it was, it, we get it on August 31st, 2016. We get this, we get this situation here at the city council.
I did not know that, sir.
A year ago. So that means that...
I did not know that. I, I found out, I think in April of this year.
Well, that means that the, the, the court took the resolution right before that time.
Yeah, I did not, I did not know that, sir.
Did you, did you go to court?
No, sir. I did not know that.
So you never went to court?
No, sir.
Never?
Never, sir.
You never went to court?
No, sir.
So 2016, during the year 2016, you never went to court?
No, sir.
To discuss about the taxes and the problem?
No, sir.
Councilor Reyes.
Thank you for being here this evening. I think this question is going to be more referred to Councilor Ortiz, who is well-known in this case, and she probably can't explain to us, you know, how far she has gone, what does she think we can do at this level? Because I don't want to make any promise that we're not going to be able to accomplish and, and just, you know, just make a, you know, false hope that is totally out of our hands.
Thank you so much. So, this is an unfortunate situation. I think that Council Rodriguez is, is correct in, in saying what the history of this is. I know that you and I have spoken about what, what the history was, and I know that, that in our conversations, you've at least gone to court one time, and that was for the, in a year. You went to court sometime this summer, correct?
It's for the eviction notice only, not, never about the property.
I'm sorry, say, speak into the mic, please.
It's for the eviction notice only, that's a, that...
So the first time that you were in court was for the eviction notice?
Yes, ma'am.
But never previous to that?
No, ma'am.
And so that's, that's, he's been true to saying that with us. I think that where, we're at as a housing committee and as a body in revisiting the process and just revisiting the property is that we're in a place where this has already come to us in August. The next time that we're able to vote on this is actually the disposition, which is the sale of 65 Ferry Street, which will be, since it has been a year, that is the next probable step that's about to happen. In regards to being able to change the rules, we're not in a space to change any of the rules. We're here to follow through with the information that we have and what we, what we, what we know of it. We don't have, I would really like to, Attorney Corrigan, it seems as if, when you're here, he's not to come, to be able to show your, the notices that you should have received from the city for this year.
No, ma'am.
And that's not anything that I'm privy to?
Right.
Or you're privy to?
So...
And, and what I will say is that this isn't, this isn't, this isn't anything that, that makes me feel good about, about what I'm hearing, because I've heard it before, but that does not mean that...
That's right.
That it's, that is completely factual. I think we can only go with what that's considered hearsay, and we're only going off what we hear.
Okay, let me, go ahead.
Know that, that I want you to think that we're going to be able to do something, but if you had the opportunity to get the property back, what you will, you'll do differently. Is something like you planning to work, is something to do? What will be your plan? Because it's like Council Ortiz is saying, it's something like...
My plan is to get, to get the money and pay off the property tax and get it back to our name. I'm going to sell it and then I probably move because I, with all your respect, I love the city, I live here more than 30 years, I have volunteered all my life, everything you name it. I got laid off, I used to work for the school department, I got laid off 2008, and then...
So you retired from the City of Lambs?
Partly, sir.
You worked, you worked for the sewer department?
Yeah, for 17 years.
They're both LPS workers.
And my wife also still work for the City of Lambs.
All right, sir, this, this is what we're going to do. I would like to, um...
To send correspondent and get more information.
No, no, uh-uh. Let's, let's make a motion, let's order something. I would like to get a motion from one of you, if possible, to send correspondent, yes, to the, to the planning department to stop any possible disposition that is in place right now before, and, and actually to set up a meeting to discuss, to discuss this item here at this level. Is this, okay?
I will be more than happy to support the motion.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
I think, you know, this is a case, it's a unique case. I mean, it's something like, those cases we don't want to be part of, unfortunately. If it were to be up to us, we wouldn't be able to make a decision, but I think Councilor Rodriguez being very, you know, smart enough just to kind of stop any process, and we need to work from...
Thank you. I think that that is the, the best that we can do as a housing committee, is to make that request. I think I want to reiterate Councilor Reyes's statement that that is not fail-safe in any kind of way, but is our attempt to fully get all the information and be as fair as possible as...
Thank you, ma'am.
...councilors and as, as representatives of our community. So I'd like to make a motion that we send correspondents to the planning department, planning and development, correct? To planning and development to stop any disposition, to suspend any disposition or process for 65 Ferry Street pending the next housing committee meeting where we can get further information on, was the proper process fully...
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Sure. Sir?
Yes, sir.
Assuming that everything goes through, the RFP, okay, assuming that everything is true, that everything goes through, and we have a meeting here next time that we meet, which is going to be probably on the...
September 11th.
September 11th, yes.
September 11th?
Probably.
Probably, we're just...
Yes, we're just assuming right now.
Okay.
So, you, you have a year, a year, you, you, the city have one year to give you a chance to come up with the money. Do you have that type of money? It's about 60-something thousand dollars that you own taxes and, and all that stuff.
As far as I know, it's only 30-something, but the interest and everything is add up, and it's cost more to that amount to 54, 55, the last time I checked. But that's why I'm here, since I'm here, I get to meet with you.
So do you have that kind of, that kind of money to actually pay the city and then send it?
I don't have 60. I have, I have two girls in college right now, moving in next week, and then I probably have 40, and that's it. Could, would you take 40 and then, because the interest...
No, we're not, we're not, we're not in the process to negotiate here.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry.
Yes, we just wanted to make sure that before we actually have a meeting here with the attorneys, the decision-making, which is going to be asked together with the planning department, and if we get into an agreement, if you are be able to, incapable to do that agreement.
And get the money, if you can.
And get the money.
Is this, okay?
I will be more than happy to support the motion.
Thank you, sir, thank you, ma'am.
I think, you know, this is a case, it's a unique case. I mean, it's something like, those cases we don't want to be part of. Unfortunately, if it would be up to us, we wouldn't be able to make a decision. But I think Counselor Rodriguez being very, you know, smart enough just to kind of stop any process, and we need to work from...
Thank you. I think that that is the best that we can do as a housing committee, is to make that request. I think I want to reiterate Counselor Reyes's statement that that is not fail-safe in any kind of way, but is our attempt to fully get all the information and be as fair as possible as counselors and as representatives of our community. So, I would like to make a motion that we send correspondents to the Planning Department, Planning and Development, correct? To Planning and Development to stop any disposition, to suspend any disposition or process for 65 Ferry Street pending the next Housing Committee meeting, where we can get further information on, was the proper process fully...
Second.
Discussion. Discussion.
Discussion.
Sure. Sir?
Yes, sir.
Assuming that everything goes through, the RFP, okay, assuming that everything is true, that everything goes through, and we have a meeting here next time that we met, which is going to be probably on the...
September 11th.
September 11th, yes.
September 11th?
Probably.
Probably, we're just...
Yes, we're just assuming right now.
Okay.
So, you have a year, a year, you, the city have one year to give you a chance to come up with the money. Do you have that type of money? It's about sixty-something thousand dollars that you owe in taxes and all that stuff.
As far as I know, it's only thirty-something, but the interest and everything is add up, and it's cost more to that amount to fifty-four, fifty-five, the last time I checked. But that's why I'm here. Since I'm here, I get to meet with you.
So, do you have that kind of money to actually pay the city and then...
I don't have sixty, I have, I have two girl in college right now, moving in next week. And then, I probably have forty, and that's it. Could, would you take forty and then...
No, we're not, we're not, we're not in the process to negotiate here.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, we just wanted to make sure that before we actually have a meeting here with the attorneys, the decision-making, which is going to be asked together with the Planning Department. And if we get into an agreement, if you are be able to, incapable to do that agreement.
And get the money.
And get the money.
Get the money.
And get the money.
The expectation, through you.
Sure.
The expectation of the city is for you to pay your complete bill. There's not, there's...
Not going to be any plan.
There's no plan available at this stage. It needs to be the total amount. And the total amount goes up every single day because of interest and will go up until there is an agreement phase. I think that is between you and the attorney, and for you to know what that final amount is and be prepared to pay that total amount if you're going to, as we go through this process. From what I, that's what I understand as far as taxes are concerned. There are no discounts. All of us have to pay the full amount of our portion. How we pay it is different as far as going out plans. But because I believe, and I can firmly speak on this at this moment, based on what the rules are, when you are the property owner, there's opportunity to make payments, even possibly in that year time. But that time has passed. That time has passed, and so, there won't be any discounting of the probability of there being any discounting of any amount or taking off any type of...
Not insurance, what is the...
Interest.
Interest, yes.
Any type of interest is not a probability.
So, sir?
It's possible.
No.
Okay, okay.
So, sir?
Now, I am clear, because when I spoke to Mr. Corrigan many time about that, he said, I have to talk to the Housing Committee. But at first, you know, my frustration is I don't really want to meet. I just want to walk away with everything happy, but now... Yes, sir.
Yes, we are willing to help you.
Thank you, sir.
We are willing to negotiate, not negotiate, but we're willing to have a meeting with you, have a meeting with the attorneys, have a meeting with the Planning Department, and come up with a resolution.
Thank you, sir.
As far as you are committed to this, to the Housing Committee and to the city, that you're going to come up with the money eventually, once you have it.
Okay.
Because we are stopping the entire process, or at least we're requesting it to, for the process to be stopped up till we have a meeting with you.
Thank you, sir.
All together here.
Thank you, sir.
So, there is a motion on the table, councilors?
Yeah, there's a second motion.
All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. So, councilors, in the meantime, I would like to also get a motion to send correspondents to Attorney Corrigan to get prepared on this item and to kind of like probably get in touch with the gentleman, right? Because we sent correspondents to, only to the Planning Department.
Yeah, I think that he needs to get involved.
And, you know, in the legal portion that we probably have to face, because we don't know what we doing. I mean, we only requesting just to be able to help you or start from somewhere.
So, that is, can I get a motion to send correspondents to Attorney Corrigan to be prepared for this item or to get more information to us from this item and to get in touch with the gentleman?
So, move.
Second.
All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Counselor, there is any other motion on these items to smooth and probably expedite the process on this?
Can we table the motion? I mean, to, the items and...
I was just going to table it.
Table it, okay.
So...
Motion to table?
Motion to table 337-16.
Second.
All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Counselor, there is any other items that would like to speak on behalf of...
Liza's not here for anything.
No problem. Motion to adjourn?
So, move. Second.
All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir, and we're going to notify you.
Thank you, sir and ma'am.
Thank you.
Have a good night.